10:27 PM, public meeting in the Norfolk School Committee shall be physically closed to the public to avoid group congregation. Alternative public access this meeting shall be done via Google Meet Online Video Conferencing. This application will allow users to view the meeting and provide comments during the allocated windows as outlined in the board's public comment policy. To join, follow the web link or call in the dial-in number listed below under the call start time, call to order. The meeting will be recorded for future rebroadcast by Norfolk Community Television. And then it provides a Google Link number, which if you found this part, I presume you know. And as we start out every meeting, I'll read the mission statement, which is the Norfolk Public Schools offers a safe, joyful, and challenging learning environment that meets the needs of our diverse students. Through school, family, and community partnerships, we provide an education that inspires lifelong learners and cultivates caring and productive citizens of our ever-changing world. Roll call, please.
Jennifer Nguyen.
Midora Champagne.
Paul Cochran.
Promise Oil.
Ingrid Alardi.
All right, so we will move on now to public comment. I know we have a few folks joining us, so welcome to those folks. And I will give it a second, and I may need assistance if someone does raise a little hand and I can't figure out how to work it. So please let me know if anyone has a question right now. I'm not seeing anything. Does anyone else see differently?
I don't know if there's a hand option, unless somebody has downloaded it on Meets, there's no hand option. So I don't believe so. So I would suggest that someone just say, excuse me.
Yeah, unmute yourself and state your business.
That's probably good as a point of view.
Yeah, I'm pretty sure, Thomas, you don't have to worry. GMeat doesn't have, unless you download the extension, it doesn't have that capability.
Let me.
And post it at, if they would like to make a comment, they can put a note in the chat field so that you know they're on the call.
I know Tom Cavanaugh hasn't worked this well, so I'll put the onus on him real quick. Tom, is there any other suggestion you can provide beyond people just doing exactly what we just mentioned?
Just what you just said is perfect.
Okay. All right, I am not seeing anything. So we're going to move on to correspondence. We don't have any this time. And then our first vote of the meeting is going to be for the BIKO appointments, or reappointment, I guess it would be. And Ingrid, you might as well just take over and explain this portion.
So we are part of the BIKO Collaborative. There are 17 districts that are members of BIKO, and BIKO provides special educational programming that serves students that we are not necessarily able to meet the needs of in the district. Members have a tuition discount as a result of being part of the collaborative. And the Board of Directors currently is comprised of superintendents from all 17 districts. You can also appoint a school committee member to serve on the BIKO, or the superintendent can serve. So I have served on BIKO's board since I have started in Norfolk. I'm happy to continue to serve. I've been the chair for the last three years and hoping somebody else will take that role on for next year, but I'm happy to serve. They meet on Thursdays, hopefully, at 11:30. So the school committee has to vote either to appoint me or to appoint another member to serve for BIKO.
Okay, I see no reason to change what's working well. So do we have a motion to reappoint Ingrid as the BIKO member from the Norfolk School Committee?
So moved.
Okay, do you have a second?
Second.
Any further discussion?
No.
Okay, seeing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Let it be noted, it was four nothing. And then second item under my portion is a memo of agreement regarding the educator evaluation. And I guess, Ingrid, I guess it makes sense for you to again jump in, explain the background of this one.
Sure. So the state has regulations and requirements that the district has to put into place to evaluate educators on an annual basis. General guidelines are then negotiated and part of our collective bargaining agreement with the Norfolk Teachers Association. Given that we have closed school in March and will not be reopening this year, there are many components of the evaluation cycle that we cannot complete. So observations of instruction in classrooms obviously can't take place right now. We also look at student achievement data, mid and end-of-year data to consider as part of the process. Teachers also have goals that they set, but again, with the year interrupted, many of those can't be completed this year. The Department of Education has given districts several different options as to what you can do with regards to educator evaluation. We have negotiated that with the NTA, and Tom may wish to jump on at the end, but we are recommending pursuing one of the recommendations of the Department Ed, which is to pause the current evaluation system. For the purposes of reporting, all educators would carry forward the end-of-year evaluation rating they had last year. New staff would be, who are brand-new this year, would receive an end-of-year rating based on their mid-year formative assessment. And then we would restart this year of the evaluation process in September. Teachers may need to make some adjustments to their goals, but we would basically freeze this year and continue the process next year. So behind the cover letter, you have a draft of the memo of agreement. District Legal Council has reviewed it as well as the NTA. So we would need the school committee to vote to accept the MOA to the current collective bargaining agreement, pausing the educator evaluations cycle for this year, with teachers receiving summative ratings based on their performance last year and new teachers based on their mid-cycle review.
Okay, thank you for that. I think that makes sense. Do we have a motion to accept the memo of agreement as explained?
So moved.
Do we have a second?
I'll second.
Any further discussion on that?
I just want to say, I think it's a smart move, and my district is doing it as well with a lot of, for people, laypeople out there. A lot of the teacher goals are tied to student assessment, and right now, I mean, it's just not an accurate reflection of how students are doing. So I think it's the right move to do, it's a smart move. So thank you, NTA, for agreeing.
I think it's fair and equitable, too. I mean, it's, in essence, what we're doing for the students as well. So I think that it, you know, I think it's the right, certainly the right choice.
Tom, did you have anything you wanted to add that I forgot?
No, other than it seems to be a fairly standard agreement between a lot of associations and districts across the state.
All right. We need a vote.
Yeah, I'd agree with that. It makes total sense, so I appreciate the cooperation. Okay, so all those in favor?
Aye.
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 Okay, unanimous? And then we will move on to Ingrid's portion of the evening.
All right. So the first thing I shared with you in your packets, we have, obviously, on April 21st, Governor Baker made the announcement that he was closing schools for the remainder of this academic year. And then the following Friday, the Department of Ed put out new guidance for remote learning, given that we will be closed for the remainder of the year. The new guidance, the primary things that stood out is that the Department of Ed is now allowing districts to move forward with teaching new content and new material. And they have issued guidance as to what they consider the priority standards to be in each content area that students would need to master in order to be successful in the following grade. We have revised all of our remote learning plans to now focus on addressing that new content. So all of the assignments that teachers are posting will address those priority standards on the grade-level academic calendars. The other adjustment we made was, again, consistent with recommendations from the Department of Ed to increase the frequency and the number of pre-recorded lessons as opposed to live lessons. And that is based on guidelines from the MIT Learning Lab Study and from a feedback that they've received at the state level. The live learning lessons can be very powerful and effective, but it also is really challenging for a lot of families to attend at specific times, given that in many of our households, parents are working full-time, they're sharing equipment between students. So the pre-recorded lessons gives greater access that students can go back to them and watch those lessons at a time that's most convenient. Teachers do then check in either in small groups or throughout the week through office hours to check for understanding. They're also assigning assignments following those pre-recorded lessons that they are reviewing and providing students with feedback on. The entire remote learning plan is online, so this is the last phase of it to carry us through June. We also incorporated feedback that we got from our own district parent survey in making those adjustments. And we heard a lot of what was reported from the Department of Ed. Parents are also looking for social-emotional support for students. As Midora mentioned earlier, this is very challenging for a lot of our kids that aren't seeing their peers on a daily basis. So in all grade levels, teachers are providing social-emotional check-ins that are non-academic, so opportunities for students to connect with their peers. Some grade levels are doing like an author sharing, or I know kindergarten had done some virtual show and tell, but providing opportunities for students to connect outside of academics. We continue to provide pre-recorded lessons for all of the special subject areas, art, music, and physical education, as well as mindfulness and relaxation exercises on a daily basis. Additional material is also posted under the additional resources, so for families that are looking for more content, there is additional recommendations. Khan Academy links are there for people who want to explore something further. Overall, when we did the parent survey study, about over 90% of our families are accessing the grade-level calendars. We have a very high attendance rate and participation rate in our remote learning, so we're really pleased about that. We've gotten some very positive feedback. We have heard from some families that, you know, when you're working and the younger kids do require a lot of support to access that online learning, especially in first and second grade, that it can be challenging for families. So I think the pre-recorded response to that a little bit. But overall, we've gotten very positive feedback. So we've got that in place, and we are ready to begin those enriched learning modules starting on Monday, May 11. Happy to answer any questions people might have regarding that.
Nope, that sounds good, thank you.
Anybody else have questions?
Well, Ingrid, it's Jen. I gave you this feedback before. I live this at Freeman as well as HOD. And I just want to say, I really agree with the pre-recorded lessons because, again, sometimes as wonderful it is as it is to see the teachers and have that live session, I've also witnessed and have myself found that sometimes there's a lot of tech difficulty. So it's a very, sometimes it'd be a very disjointed kind of lesson, like turn your mic off, or let's figure this out. So I feel that the pre-recorded also gives a more, is also enriching. So I just wanted to give that feedback that, yeah.
Great. And we found that especially to the technical difficulties are especially true for the younger grades. So in kindergarten and first grade, there's a lot more small-group instruction with two or three students.
And I like that. Yep, that's great.
Works. Worked well. Any other comments about that? Okay. All right, if anyone's interested, we did post summary of all the parent survey results right on the web, so you can click on the link and you can see by question how our parents responded and what the feedback, general feedback was regarding the. The next item today is employee furloughs. We did discuss that at our last meeting. At this current time, Norfolk has not furloughed any employees. All of our employees are working. Given the extended closure announcement that Governor Baker made on April 21st, at this time, we are going to be moving forward with furloughing two groups of staff. One is the before-and-after care workers who serve in our SAC program, and the other is our cafeteria staff. Both those programs rely on tuition and revenue that they generate in order to pay employees. As we are not collecting income from either of those programs, we just don't have the funds to continue to support that. We have reached out individually to all of those employees that would be affected and notified them. Roxanne has been working closely. Most of them are part-time and do not receive any benefits from the school district. For those that do, Roxanne has been working to transition those and to support families in ensuring continuity of service for that. Furlough notices will be mailed home tomorrow. Any questions or comments?
Of course, I have a question, and this might be more for Todd, and it's just my inexperience with furlough. So do they get unemployment? Will they file for unemployment? And if so, where does part of, does the part of that money come from the town budget? Is that what happens when someone's furloughed?
Yes, in this case, they would be eligible to apply for unemployment, and the town of Norfolk would receive, where public entities in Massachusetts do not pay a percentage of payroll like businesses do.
Yes.
For unemployment, it's, you know, as you go, pay as you go, if you will. So in that case, the town would get a monthly invoice for anyone collecting, any former town employee. And the town has a separate benefits budget line that this would be paid from. So we would make an effort, we've told the town, we would make an effort to have some savings from this year's budget to offset any costs associated with school employees' unemployment.
And we did do an analysis to ensure that that was going to be still beneficial and result in a savings. Involved the town in looking at that, and it was recommendation toward in this direction.
Thank you.
Any other questions on that? Okay, the next is a budget discussion, so I just wanted to provide the school committee with an update. We did meet earlier as the Budget Subcommittee. As many of you may have already seen or known, the Select Board voted Tuesday night based on a projected revenue shortfall that Todd Lindmark prepared and consulted with Todd Hassett in order to determine projections for what impact the current pandemic may have in state aid, chapter 70 aid, grant funding that we receive. And they also looked at things like potential decreases in revenue in excise tax, local receipts, and other things, funding sources in the town budget that may be affected by the stay-at-home order and the closures. Based on that forecast, the Select Board voted to reduce the current budget that they are bringing forward to town meeting by $983,000. The $983,000 reduction will be offset by a $380,000 credit that they are expecting to receive from a state grant for admitting Milis and Medway into the Regional Dispatch Center, which leaves a total town budget shortfall of $602,000. We had a meeting, Todd and I, earlier today with Todd Lindmark, life and KP Business Manager and Superintendent. This time, the school share of that reduction will be $112,000 for King Philip, which, again, gets multiplied by three, because if we reduce the dollars and King Philip and rent-Home allocations go down as well. So $112,000 for KP, and the reductions that we will be required to make to balance the budget at the Norfolk Elementary are $285,000. We have had some preliminary discussion as to how we might approach that. We don't have a final solution yet. There's a lot of variables that we need to finalize before we can make recommendations for those reductions. We are obviously going to do everything that we can to preserve teaching positions and to preserve programs. We are looking at some reductions that are easier to make. For example, we are going to be eliminating $8,000 from the budget, or recommending we eliminate $8,000 from the budget for summer help, which we typically hire, because we are actually able to start the cleaning process earlier because the schools are closed. We will probably be recommending delaying filling some positions and possibly eliminating some of the positions that we were looking for in the new budget request. We will also evaluate whether or not there's any potential to pre-purchase some materials that we have budgeted for. And again, that's going to, the amounts that we have available will depend on those other commitments in terms of the town unemployment costs. The town will then be left with another 200-plus, about $202,000 that they will have to reduce from other departments. They are currently looking at trying to prevent layoffs across the town, and they will be going to the other unions, fire department, police department, EPW, and hoping to close that gap with salary concessions from those unions in order to avoid layoffs. The Advisory Board is scheduled to meet next week. They have not yet reviewed the recommended budget by the Select Board to determine whether or not they're going to support that at town meeting. So that's scheduled for next Wednesday. And that's about where we're at right now. We did ask the town when we met earlier today about the potential of using stabilization funds in the fall to offset revenue shortages. Right now, the town between current stabilization funds as well as free cash has, Todd, you remember the exact number and I don't, it's like 2 million together?
Yeah, just over 2 million combined, 1.7 of stabilization and 3 and 1/4 of free cash.
And at this point, they are not recommending using that to close a revenue shortfall if that occurs in the fall, because if they go below that threshold, it can, would impact their bond ratings. Maybe, Todd, you can speak to that a little bit better than I can in terms of what the requirements are for that.
So the town is concerned that the credit rating agencies that evaluate each town's creditworthiness look for certain reserves and standards. And right now, the town is hovering at the sort of the minimum acceptable level of reserves in this area, which is 5% of the town's operating budget. So they're concerned about going below that. It may impact future, certainly, adjustments to the town's rating and then impact the cost of issuance of new debt going forward.
Additionally, at this point, they are suggesting that, they've heard from all departments, and I know it's discussed at the Select Board meeting, that there are significant unbudgeted costs that we may all be seeing in the fall. At the school level, we have not received guidance yet from the Department of Ed as to what reopening will look like. There's discussion about social distancing within the schools. If you had to do that with transportation, then districts may have to add buses in order to accommodate that, which is an additional cost. They are also talking about potentially not allowing students to eat in the cafeteria, and that they would have to eat in their classrooms, which could result in staffing costs for us to cover teachers' contractual obligations for a duty-free lunch. Cleaning supplies, sanitization, that we're expecting those costs to go up in the frequency of cleaning, that's scheduled to be altered. So the town is recommending that whatever we do have for stabilization, they would prefer to apply as needed for one-time costs that are unanticipated and unbudgeted. Their concern about using it to offset the budget is that then the following year, if revenues don't improve, you end up with a double shortfall. So that's their recommendation at this point. But again, Advisory Committee has not reviewed the recommendation or the proposed budget yet. They'll do that Wednesday, and then they'll determine what they're supporting going forward to town meeting. So that's where we are right now for budget. I don't know if anybody has questions, comments, thoughts, things they want to share? Paul or Midora want to jump in?
No, nothing to add. I think that sums it up pretty well, and we'll learn more next week.
I would agree. I mean, I think it's also reasonable to point out, too, from a school's perspective, that with respect to stabilization funds, if we did have a negative impact to the bond rating, it would impact projects we kind of have on our long-term horizon as far as our ability to borrow for a school expansion and things like that. So I'm certainly aware of and understand the concerns the town has in that respect.
Yeah, it adds more expense to the town's operating budget in future years if we end up with a higher interest rate on borrowing.
Ingrid, I have a comment. And I'm saying this as an educator, as a parent and a resident, and I'm going to be very strong with my words. While I understand how some Select Board members may have come to this decision, I just want to make it clear to people that after sitting through a few budget sessions, if we can't afford to add in one math-science specialist at Freeman Kennedy at, what, 60 grand a year? Make a mistake. The quality and opinion education with the cut of, how much? $285,000, is that correct? For Norfolk?
Yeah.
Where do you think it's going to come from? $8,000, that's great that you're saving on summer, and this is not directed towards you. That's great that you're saving $8,000 in cleaning. That's a drop in the bucket. $285,000 is going to impact class sizes, quality of education, and we're paying, and where are we? We are what, the bottom of the ladder for towns of our same socioeconomic, right? Aren't we second-to-last in spending?
We are.
A comparable town, second-to-last. Where will we be if we have this cut? Will be negative? Bottom?
Well, right now, it would be hard to project that, Jen, because quite honestly, quite a few districts are in the same situation, and most are looking at significant budget cuts related to the pandemic closure. We have asked the Select Board, and they are going to put it as an agenda item for the next meeting, to formally and officially vote that if revenue shortfalls do not come in at the level that they're expecting, or if the revenue forecast improves, that any additional revenues would be reallocated to departments and budgets that have been proportionally with the cuts that were made. So they will be taking that issue up at the next meeting and voting on that, although they did all express that that was the intent. But we're asking for that to be voted on at the next Select Board meeting.
And when would that, when would those monies be, they'd be given before August? Because I'm worried about hiring. You lay someone off, they're going to go get another job. They're not going to sit around. And then, you know, as a teacher, you know who gets hired in August?
Yeah. I don't think that money would be available until September or October. It would be done at the special town meeting. However, if they go forward with a higher budget, we will have to take the same approach. We will not be able to fill positions, because if they go forward at the higher budget number with the intent that Cutler made in the fall, we would have to reduce positions then. And if you hire and fill a position, and then we have to cut it in October, we also have to account for the additional unemployment costs that we're going to incur. So we would.
Not to mention the disruption to the school year, too. I mean, and so relative to the elementary level, I think that's, it would be a meaningful disruption to have to experience mid-year layoffs. But for KP as well, I mean, I think that would be sort of an endgame. I mean, they would have classes that just wouldn't exist anymore.
Well, and then they might lose college accreditation.
I don't think they're, in the meeting that I had with KP today, and both with the district, while $285,000, as you said, in an already leaned budget, is very, very difficult, and it will be the same for KP, we are doing everything that we can. And while you said, yeah, $8,000, summer help is a low number, we're trying to look for all those potential areas where we could realize savings without impacting class size. We are actively working on that. It's just too early to speak to it. We are also, you have another item on your agenda tonight that I was going to speak to later. Oh, no, we didn't put it as a separate item. We are also, as a district, looking to issue early retirement incentives to see if any additional staff may consider that. That is ready and prepared to go out to the Teachers Association tomorrow. The two-week turnaround or three-week turnaround, I just have to speak with the association first to confirm. But once we do that, we are also hoping that if anybody takes an early retirement, we might see $30,000, $20,000 of savings from that. So there's just too many other things in play right now for us to say with decisiveness where those reductions might come. But I think the budget plan and administration is committed to trying to do everything we can to prevent that. And we have some plans, so we're hopeful that we will be able to make reductions to positions that we would have a potential to risk were in the fall, where it wouldn't be necessarily teaching positions. So we're looking at all of that.
I know you are, Ingrid, and everybody appreciates that. I just want people who may be listening to understand, this is a very significant amount. This isn't like, oh, they're not going to get their new computer, Chromebooks, you know? This is very significant. And I know for my friends and other parents and many people who live in this town, we value, Norfolk is known for its good schools, and I just would hate, hate to see us in a position where we have to vote on larger class sizes to break the union contract. And maybe I'm being, I just want people to know this is serious. I just want people to know this is serious. And that's where I'm at. And of course, we're all fighting, Tom, or I'm not trying to say this is where it's going to be, but I I want the town people to know this is very serious.
Anybody else want to jump in or have comments?
Yeah, I guess the only thing I'd add, I mean, and this is the hand that we've been dealt on a worldwide, nationwide, statewide locality level, so. Uh every town is having this same conversation to some level. So we're not unique about it and it's it's incredibly unfortunate um that we're in this position. Yeah, it is going to be certainly detrimental. Um and if it is detrimental, hopefully it's detrimental on the shortest terms possible. Um but the, there is no getting around the fact this is not ideal, this is not good. Um and there's going to be short term pain. We just have to make sure we make decisions that are best for the long term. For what Jen is speaking of, the educational quality of the town. And of the administration and the teachers and the students and everyone associated with it. So we'll get there. Um I know. I hate going the storytelling route, but when I first got on the the school committee, um was during the the economic downturn of two thousand eight, two thousand nine. And and we went through this and I would have to say, having now going through this a second time. We're much better positioned to make smart decisions now than we were then. Then it was just, we took a chainsaw and just did whatever we could to keep the lights on. This is going to be more strategic. It will be more reasonable. It'll be done in the the proper context of what we need to do. In order to balance out all the needs, but the unfortunate thing is, it is going to happen. It just hopefully it doesn't happen to the level. We think it may happen and and who knows, maybe things start to improve, but it's probably not going to be anytime soon. It's going to be a very. Hopefully, a nice steady rise, but it's it's going to be some short term pain that we're going to have to experience, but we will get through it.
And I would also say that um with regards to the revenue projections and Todd can jump in. Um we did have a call today and we we our business consultant, Todd Hassett, worked with the town in looking at those. Um they do believe, uh both Toddlin, Mark and Blake believe that the estimated reductions are not overly conservative. They think they're pretty um on track with all the data that they've been given. Todd, do you want to speak to that? And I think Paul might want to jump into?
Well, I just uh tell the committee that um I did work very closely with Toddlin Mark. Um we sort of worked hand in hand to craft the estimates of of both estimated local receipts and and the state aid. Um we polled a number of communities to get a sense of what others were thinking and we got some good feedback and. And I do believe we've, we've tried to take a bit of a conservative approach um for the town of Norfolk, but not, not an aggressively. Uh conservative approach. So um certainly, none of us has a crystal ball. Um but um I think at this point, given what's what we're experiencing, it it's probably a fair. Um estimate, uh given what we know right now.
Paul, I think you wanted to jump in too. Did you have something to add to that?
Yeah, Jen, I um I agree, this is a uh difficult situation we're in, but we're not, like Thomas said, we're not in it alone. Um if you, I think you were listening to the select board meeting the other night.
Um yeah.
Chris Wyder was thinking more like fifty percent more than the the current cut. I think the select board agreed, including Chris Wyder, that um you know, the nine eighty-three, I think it is, is. Given the best information they have. And this is, this is just um how it's going to go forward. It doesn't mean this is what it's going to be. That's decided by the town. So, you know, it, it, you know, we don't have all the information. Toddlin Mark teed it up, I think perfectly. Um it's. You know, we don't have all the facts. We don't know where this is going to go. It's not like any other type of situation anybody's ever been in. And uh it's difficult, painful, and no one's happy about it. But I agree with your point that um, you know, it's good for people to be aware of what's going on and, you know, getting this message out so people become a little bit more involved and understand. Um what we're trying to grapple with to, you know, balance this budget. It's not easy and, you know, everybody's going to bleed a little bit, unfortunately.
And I agree, Thomas and Paul, I thank you. I your um calm words go very far. I just want people to understand where we're at so that in September, there's no shock. So that's.
And I think too, once we have a final direction, we know what's going forward, we'll be able to better communicate out what that might look like for the schools. As I said, there's still a lot of moving parts right now. Um the, one of the points that Life made the other night that um we talked a little bit about and and I had shared is for us. Again, there are some communities going forward with the budget as it's proposed right now with the intent that in November at their town meeting, they will reduce, make cuts um based on the revenue shortfall. For us, the challenge is, if you hire somebody and we're in November and then we're told we have to cut two hundred and eighty-five thousand. We've already paid out the beginning of the school year, so those cuts actually have to go deeper um when they're made partway through the year. Um additionally, if we fill positions and then have to reduce them, the cuts have to include an extra twenty thousand or so for unemployment. So. Um we would probably have to take, until we know for sure there won't be further cuts. We would have to take a conservative approach to how we staff for next year to protect the district from additional deeper cuts. Um that could come if we don't plan carefully. So. Um that's sort of where we're at right now, but we are doing everything that we possibly can to try to protect classroom teaching positions and the integrity of our our educational programs. Any other budget?
Yeah, I guess to state the obvious, I mean, to to your, to what you just said and to add to it, I mean, our main goal, I think all of us would agree, is to maintain class size. Our longstanding policy to maintain class size as what it is, a- as well as as keep the teaching position. So. It kind of goes to what I was saying is, is there's going to be some short term pain, if you will. But it's far less if we do it now versus what Ingrid was just laying out, where if we do have to do something in October, November, we're forced to react as opposed as opposed to doing something proactively. I'd much rather do something proactively. And ideally, the situation improves and we can start bringing stuff back. This approach, uh you know, none of us like the number that we're working with, I get that, but this approach is the is the best that we can come up with, given what we have for now. And and a- as Paul was alluding to, it's, we can't really solve for why, because we don't know all the equation. Um but this is the best we can do for the moment, so we'll, we'll do that, we'll take the sensible approach, we'll do what we can. Um I think Jen makes an excellent point that we do have to make sure that everyone in the town is is aware of the implications of this. And there is an incredible downside to what we're doing. Um and I think it's, it's probably made a little more difficult by the fact that you've got so many folks that have. Personal challenges going on right now in their own lives and they've got, they're being pulled in seventeen different directions. So it's almost a case where they can't even really focus on this yet. So I imagine, again, to Jen's point, where a lot of people may not know this yet, so we, yeah, we definitely do have to make sure people are aware what the implications of this are going to be. Um so people can at least be fully informed.
Um to say that. Oh, I'm sorry. To echo what Thomas was just saying as well, I I did want to point out, I know we discussed this in the budget subcommittee meeting that preceded this meeting. Um but it it was heartening that the select board did. I mean, each member of the select board. Very clearly stated that their intention was to reallocate funds back into the budget, either entirely or proportionate to whatever. You know, the the non-shortfall savings, however you want to, you know, kind of describe the figure, um are, should we have more money to work with than we do? Ultimately, though, you know, I would agree with what Thomas was saying, that's. They can, they can vote to that effect, but it it does not end there. That does not mean that it will happen. And so I think that educating. Anyone in town, whether they're a parent of a school age child or not, um as to what the implications of the budget action are and and how, what the mechanism is for reestablishing. Um the level services budget that we were all looking at previously at town meeting is is meaningful. Um you know, I think it's, it's an important thing. It's hard for me to look past next week at this point, um given the way that things in the world are. Um so, you know, kind of crossing a day off in October, November for special town meeting to make sure I go vote about the budget. Um might not happen in the best case. Um and and now it's even more challenging, but I think that just making sure folks are educated and informed as to what. What we would be gaining back early in the fall if we were able to increase the budget um through that mechanism is is meaningful and important.
Um and and to Madora's point, some of the big things that we don't know yet are um what the state budget is going to look like and whether they're going to use any of the state stabilization or revenue day funds to balance the budget. Or what the federal stimulus money might look like. So if additional revenues come in, it does have to be voted, the 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 select board endorsing it. Doesn't make it happen automatically. They would make that recommendation and then it would have to be voted on at that special town meeting. So we will absolutely have to communicate and make sure people are aware of that. Um as it would be critical for our our budget. Any other budget questions?
Nope.
All right, um we had talked about reduction in force letters at our last meeting. Um at this time, we are going to hold. Um again, as we have um a cut, several things in play and look at how we might close that budget gap. Um with the early retirement incentive going back out, we're going to hold, we have until June fifteenth to issue those notices. Uh but we are hoping to try to find ways to, um whether it's not filling some new positions uh to work around it so that we don't have to issue reduction in force letters. Uh but we won't know that for another week or so. We still have up until June fifteenth. So at this time, we're going to hold off um with the intent that if, uh as the budget picture becomes clearer over the couple of weeks. And what our options are in terms of reductions, um then we'll make that decision early June, uh whether or not we have to issue. Any questions on that one?
No, makes sense.
Read body language on this virtual. So have a question, just let me know. Anybody have questions on that? Okay, the next items are actually fairly quick. Um every year, the school committee is asked to um, has a responsibility to reappoint some positions. Um the first is the school physician and the second is the school nurse assignments. So you should have those memos in your packet. Um as far as the school nurses, we have three school nurses, uh Anne Hurley, Jackie McPhailly and Barbara De Giacomo. Um they have been excellent and um served all of our students very well. Um during the pandemic and our school closure, they're also supporting the public health nurse with contact tracing um and answering questions. Uh it would be my recommendation at this point that the committee vote to reappoint all three of our school nurses.
Okay. Do we have a motion to appoint the three existing school nurses as Ingrid named?
So moved?
Okay, a second?
Second.
Assuming no further discussion, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Okay, motion is unanimous?
And then the next is to reappoint the school physician. Um Pam, are you able to read that memo? I wasn't able to access it. Uh the terms of that agreement for the committee, or Thomas, can you read that?
I do not have it in front of me, so no for me.
I can.
All right.
Do you want me to read it?
Yes, please.
Uh it is my recommendation to reappoint Dr. Henry D'Angelo as the school physician for Norfolk Public Schools commencing on July first, twenty twenty and ending on June thirtieth, twenty twenty-one. A two thousand dollar stipend will be paid to Dr. D'Angelo for his services. Uh you also have a copy of the school physician job description um in your packets.
Um we have worked with Dr. D'Angelo for a couple of years now. The nurses really like him. He's very responsive to any questions that we have. Um he was helpful in advising us in terms of um COVID nineteen, in terms of uh adjusting uh. School protocol and procedures for students with allergies. Uh so he's been great to work with. They, anytime they have a question, they call, he gets right back to you. So I would again recommend that we continue to work with Dr. D'Angelo and that the committee vote to appoint him.
Okay. Do we have a motion to approve or reappoint Dr. D'Angelo as school physician?
So moved.
Second?
Second.
Any further discussion?
I have a kind of just a comment, I guess, on the nurses. Um if we continue with a remote learning environment in the next school year. Will we need the nurses?
What? Not me. As of right now, the the what we are hearing for direction is that we will be reopening in September, that that might look a little bit different. They're talking about having to have the nurses actually take all kids' temperatures in the morning. Um and that they may require some social distancing and and not having um school assemblies or students eating in the cafeteria. Uh so at this point, we are anticipating reopening. There is also some conversation about how if there is a new surge in the fall, we might close for a short term. Um and I think that the committee would have to make decisions at at that time. Um but during this closure, they're they're putting a lot of hours in and supporting the public health nurse, and we do anticipate that we will be reopening in some form in in September. Um so I would expect that we will need them.
Okay.
All right, any further discussion? All right, so the motion pending is to reappoint Dr. D'Angelo. All in favor?
Aye.
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 Okay, motion is unanimous? Uh then moving on, all right, Jeff was unable to join us, so we won't have a King Philip unless someone else has something to update in that regard.
I would just say, um I started to say earlier, they've been really um great partners in in this whole budget process. Um they are going to be working collaboratively with us. We do have several grants that we have written jointly. To try to support some professional development shortfalls that we might have next year. Um as well as that mental health partnership grant that we've resubmitted that, that is funding our school social worker and uh as well as a um director of wellness. So they've been partnering with us around both of those. They will be looking at budget cuts as well. Um they, their proposed budget was a three point four nine percent overall budget increase. Um they're looking at a two point five, which again, I mentioned was a hundred and twelve thousand for the fourth, but about a five hundred thousand dollar cut overall. Um in addition, whereas chapter seventy funds go to the town of Norfolk and then are appropriated to us as part of our um our our total budget. KP as a region gets those funds directly. So they are anticipating if there's a reduction in state funds, that that will also come off their budget. Um because they they go directly to KP. So beyond the five hundred, they could be looking at some shortfalls um if if state revenue is reduced. Uh but they've been good partners and we're working collaboratively um in in terms of trying to find good resources and ways to mitigate some of of what's happening.
Excellent, that's good to hear. Uh well, beyond the the partner part's good to hear, the financial portion's certainly not good to hear.
Right.
Um anything from policy?
We have not um met since the closure and will probably delay that. Um again, as as everybody said, everybody's pretty stretched thin right now, so.
Yeah, that makes sense. Okay, uh so we're moving on to a school partner renewal. Um this is always a nice one to do, the KP Music Association, which I think no, needs no further introduction beyond that. We know how. Uh impressive that association is and the achievements of the music program at both the middle school and the high school. Uh so that seems like a no brainer. So do we have a motion to renew the school partner uh with KP Music Association?
I'll make a motion.
Everybody make a motion, okay.
I was going to say the whole thing.
You know, I love my music, Jen.
Okay, that was three motions in one. Very impressive motion. Uh can someone make a second?
Second.
Oh, second.
Wow, all right, this is popular. Um I assume there's no further discussion on this one, so all in favor of renewing the school partnership agreement with KP Music Association?
Aye.
Aye.
Motion is unanimous. Uh and then we just, we need a motion to accept, if everyone's gotten a chance to already read the mini, meeting minutes, excuse me, for the April fourteenth meeting?
I make a motion to accept the minutes from April fourteenth.
Okay, do we have a second?
Second.
Okay, all in favor?
Aye. Aye.
Aye.
All right. And then last thing, so we've got for our next meeting, uh I cannot do June ninth. I can do June second, if that date could work for people.
Currently, the town meeting is scheduled for June ninth. Um considering moving it at this point, but that hasn't been finalized, so I'd suggest going with the second as well.
Yeah, I was going to say that as well. Yeah, I would say that as well. I don't think it makes sense to even try for the 9th.
I'll make a motion to adjourn.
And do we have a second?
I'll second.
Okay, so I think we got to name, name our way out of this one. So all those in favor of adjourning?
Aye.
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 Aye, Thomas Doyle. All right, so we are adjourned for the evening.
Everybody have a good night.
Thank you very much. Bye now.